I'd like to call this meeting Lakewood City Council for Monday, January 7th. The Order, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Barth.
Present.
Councilmember Bokey.
Present.
Councilmember Branstetter.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whelan.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. Now, would you all please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
But welcome back. We haven't been in session for a while. The first order of business is proclamations and presentations. And the first item under that category is proclamation declaring January 21st, 2019, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service in February as Black History Month. I would ask Ms. Vanessa McLennan, member of the Martin Luther King Jr. Day Committee, to please join me at the podium. Thanks for joining us here tonight. So whereas Monday, January 21st, 2019... Whereas Monday, June 21st, 2019, has been designated as a federal holiday celebrating the birth of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who dedicated his life to the fundamental principles of freedom, opportunity, and equal justice for all. And whereas such recognition is a direct result of his many contributions to society through his deeds and words, and whereas through his march on Washington and the "I Have A Dream" speech, Dr. King reached a worldwide audience and was recognized by people from all walks of life as the conscious of an entire nation. And whereas the month of February has been designated as Black History Month in the United States of America to highlight struggles of race and citizenship in American history from experiences of free blacks in the land of slavery to the political aspirations of African-Americans today. And whereas all Americans are reminded that our nation recognizes that all men are created equal and should not be judged by the color of their skin but by the content of their character. And whereas the city of Lakewood is committed to the ideals of a free society and is a community of great ethnic diversity, which values diversity and is dedicated to the brotherhood of men and women. And whereas the city of Lakewood will again honor the distinguished legacy of Dr. King during the 16th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration on Saturday, January 19th, at Harrison Preparatory School. Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaims Monday, January 21st, 2019, as the Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service and the month of February 2019 as Black History Month in the city of Lakewood. Invites all citizens to join us in these observances proclaim the 7th Day of January, 2019. Don Anderson, Mayor. And before I invite you to say a couple of words, I'd just like to note, this is at Harrison Prep this year. That is a change, so don't show up at that other place. I wasn't even gonna say it. It said Harrison Prep this year.
Well, that was my first note. Make sure to tell them that it's at Harrison Prep this year. This year, 2019, marks the 400th anniversary of the contributions of Black History in the United States. And so we are gonna focus on that for our MLK program this year. We have a fabulous guest speaker. His name is Charles Carson, and he was integral in starting the Safe Streets Program with the YMCA in Tacoma. We will also have a little tribute to Dr. Claudia Thomas and also Joe Ethel. And for the first time, the JBLM Elementary School, Meriwether, will be part of the scene portion of our program this year, so we're really excited for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm scared to take, turn it on again. We now move to the Youth Council Report. I see they're, now that school's back in session, they're here in force. So Youth Council, step forward.
Hi, my name is Teresa Pacio. I'm from Curtis High School, and I will be giving the Youth Council Report today. So in our last meetings, we have picked a date and a location for our Youth Leadership Summit event, so we've decided to host it on April 13th at the Boys and Girls Club. Also, we will be having our next planning meeting for that event next Monday. Also, the Youth Council will be assisting in different events in the community. For example, we will be participating in the upcoming Martin Luther King event at Harrison Prep, and we will also be assisting in the Lions Club Crab Feed on the 26th. So now we will move on to the school reports, and I will be doing the one for Curtis Senior High School. Our leadership is preparing for its culture assembly, which will be happening soon. And also, this Saturday, our Science Olympia team will be hosting the event at our school. And so a lot of different schools around Washington will be coming to Curtis for that competition. Also, our girls' basketball team has only lost one game this season, and our boys' basketball team has only lost two games this season, which is very exciting for Curtis. And our drama department has performed its Mamma Mia production, and we are now preparing for the production of Dance Blast, which will be also happening soon. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Lenise, and I'm doing the school report for Harrison Prep. To start off the year, Drama Club has just started auditions for Fiddler on the Roof. Our leadership team is preparing for two We Act campaigns, which are We Are Love and We Are Rafiki's, for the month of February, as well as our middle school leadership will be planning our MLK Assembly this year, which we are very excited for. And our knowledgeable team is right now undefeated, which makes it a very proud school. That's the only thing that can be said, so, so, very happy.
Good evening, Council. I'm Susan, and I'll be representing Clover Park High School. So we are beginning our rehearsals for our production for Drama Club. We're gonna be doing The Wizard of Oz, and it'll be on March 1st and 2nd. ASB is also planning their MLK Day Assembly and MLK Day On. And at the end of this month, we will also be having our Anti-Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Assembly. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I'm Brian Noel, and I'm representing Lakes. Currently, our ASB today just started preparing for a Tola Dance, which is sometime in February. It's our second dance of the year. Very excited about that. Our GROTC program last month had its Dining in Dinner event, and they had a guest operational speaker who was a sergeant major from the Ranger Battalion. He basically just talked about the importance of teamwork and unity. Our dance team got third place in hip-hop and second place in prom at the Bonnie Lake Competition this Saturday, and they performed on Friday at the Lace Basketball Game. We were sadly gonna perform again today, but things go as planned. So we're gonna perform on January 23rd. Then also, our Ignite mentoring program is preparing to lead the Power One event on January 18th, which is where they take freshmen and they discuss important events such as like abusive relat-, or if not like important events, important topics such as like abuse, abusive relationships, bullying, and like how to deal with that and how to solve those problems.
Hello, my name is Peyton Gomez, and I'll be representing Covenant High School. Next Thursday and Friday, our school will be having our finals, which means we will be having half-days, and we'll be having two finals each of the days. And then on the 18th, we are also having an international feast, which allows us to basically experience all of the different cultures that are represented at our school with the different foods of the areas, and we'll be doing games specific to each culture. And then we will be having a Spirit Week, the week of February 4th, and it'll go through the 8th. And then on February 22nd, we will be having a mystery dinner, which will be kind of like a murder mystery, and then we'll sit down together and eat. So that's what we have. So do you have any questions for our Youth Council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report. You mentioned that a week from today, you're having a planning meeting for your event. What's the time and location for that?
It's gonna be here at City Hall, and I believe it's at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate your report.
Yeah, thank you.
And look forward to a very productive second half of the school year. Now move to the public comment section of the agenda. This is when any member of the public may speak to any issue which is a issue, any issue which is pertinent to city business, whether or not it's on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The yellow light will come on in a 30-second warning. Red light comes on when your time is complete. Please identify yourself by name and city of residence, such as Mary Moss, Lakewood, Washington. Person who signed up tonight is Mr. Dennis Howland.
Dennis Howland, Lakewood, Washington.
... nationwide. This time, it's the State University Law Department. Get this. The survey found that 85 speakers hosting, hosted by the university during the last school year, 64 of the 19 had an underaffiliation, and two voted service. Only a long way wrong. The 15-year average of service in many public schools, five more. So what does this say about free speech and college campuses? Next generation of green acres, we... ............... Assistant editor of the Atlantic, Zachary Martin Woods, who has authored this great book, Unsettled Highlight, in a couple of conversations at the intersection of Black and White America. Welcome to both of you. First up, to you, Zach. You know what I'm talking about. You're a Williams College, you're Georgia Republican speakers. You wanted to get some deep conservatives in there. What happened? So in my case, it was just, there were people who were saying... Hey, for the most part, you're a local Democrat, if you want your other side, absolutely. Because that's exactly how you feel. But this study, you say, is the most least surprising study you've ever seen.
..........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
It's very uplifting to see black, young people providing so many very brilliant articulate leaders across the United States, and they are tackling the education system.
Thank you. That's all the people who have signed up for public comment. That doesn't preclude you from speaking if you wish to. If you wish to speak at public comment, please approach the podium at this time. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Seeing none, I declare public comment closed. We now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council Study Session of November 26, 2018. B, approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting of December 3rd, 2018. C, approval of the minutes of the City Council Study Session of December 10th, 2018. D, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $2,758,179.22 for the period of November 16th, 2018 through December 15th, 2018. E, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $2,76,955.29 for the period of November 16th, 2018 through December 14th, 2018. F, motion number 2019-01, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Ivor Gunderson in the amount of $78,000 for prosecuting attorney services from January 1, 2019 through December 31st, 2019. G, motion number 2019-02, reappointing Alyssa Pita Scanlon to serve on the Community Services Advisory Board through December 15th, 2022. H, items filed in the office of the City Clerk. One, Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes of October 3rd, 2018. Two, Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board meeting minutes of October 25th, 2018. Three, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meeting minutes of November 1, 2018. And four, Planning Commission meeting minutes of November 7th, 2018.
Is there any item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Bring none, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Ms. Moss, that we adopt the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now move to regular business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There's none, Mayor.
Is there any new business to come before the council?
There's none, Mayor.
So we move to reports by the City Manager, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers, and a happy belated New Year to all of you. Actually, we have three items this evening. The first is, I'd like to call up Shannon Kelly-Fong, our senior policy analyst, to give you an update on where we are with small cell wireless and a proposal to get some interim regulations in place. And the motivation for that is, you might be familiar with it, the FCC recently issued a ruling to accelerate the deployment of 5G technology. And so, long story short, we think it's in our community's best interest to have something in place sooner rather than later. The second item is, I'd like to have Becky Newton, our Economic Development Manager, provide this body with an update on a piece of property in Tillicum that we are recommending that we acquire for potentially a future library as the library undertakes a community engagement process, hopefully later this year in 2019. And then lastly, an item that's not on the agenda, and I apologize for that, but it's something that had come about as a result of actually council direction in early December, and that has to do with your 2019 Comprehensive Plan MAP amendments. And so there's two items that Mr. Buwer, Community and Economic Development Director, would like to talk with you about. And we did prepare and place a memo on the dais this evening, and so I'll have Mr. Buwer cover that. But first up is Ms. Kelly-Fong.
Good evening.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. As the City Manager mentioned, I'm here tonight to provide a brief update on the recent Federal Communication Commission's declaratory ruling and Third Report in Order, 18133, entitled "Accelerating Wireless Broadband Deployment by Removing Barriers to Infrastructure Investment." On September 26th, 2018, the FCC issued the aforementioned ruling and order in effort to streamline the deployment of small cell facilities and the development of 5G networks across the US. The ruling interprets and provides guidance on small cell facility siting as it pertains to Sections 253 and 332(c)(7) of the Telecommunication Act of 1996. The FCC has previously issued interpretations and guidance of these sections of the Act for other telecommunication applications. Pursuant to the Act, state and local regulations cannot prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services. The FCC uses the material inhibit standard established by the California Payphone case in 1997. Per the FCC, an effective prohibition on the provision of personal wireless service occurs when a state or local regulation materially inhibits the deployment of small cell facilities. To avoid materially inhibiting small cell facilities, the FCC concludes that jurisdictions must establish application fees that are reasonable approximation of state or local government costs and include only objectively reasonable costs and fees that are non-discriminatory. Based on these criteria, the FCC provides what they consider presumptively reasonable safe harbor fees for small cell siting. The FCC believes that these fees set at the safe harbor rates will not be challenged by small cell infrastructure developers or service providers. Siting authorities are able to charge higher fees if they can meet the previous outlined criteria. Like fees, the ruling also provides guidance on aesthetic requirements. Per the ruling, aesthetic requirements must be reasonable, non-discriminatory, objective, and published in advance. The Order of the FCC Ruling in Order establishes new shot clock regulations. As a reminder, a shot clock is a period of time in which a siting authority has to act on a small cell facility application. And act again means granting of a small cell siting application or the issuance of a written decision denying a small cell siting application by the siting authority. The Order importantly becomes effective on January 14th, 2019. On this date, small cell facility shot clocks will be reduced to 90 days for siting on new infrastructure and 60 days for siting on existing infrastructure. Currently, the city has a franchise application and franchise agreements for installing, maintaining, repairing, and operating small cell facilities within the public right-of-way. The franchise includes aesthetic and design standards, and the inclusion of these standards were intended to be a stop-gap practice while the city comprehensively revised Title 18A, which would include provisions specific to the aesthetic and design standards. Pursuant to the ruling, aesthetic requirements must be published by April 13th, 2019, and the comprehensive Title 18A revision will not be ready for consideration by this time. Given this, it's recommended that the city adopt interim regulations for small cell siting. The city could adopt these interim controls on January 21st. These regulations would later become incorporated into the full forthcoming Title 18A update. Should the council adopt interim regulations? They would do so on January 21st, as I previously mentioned. The council would also be required to hold a public hearing within 60 days of its adoption. Attachment A is a memorandum provided by Planning Manager Tiffany Spears, which provides an overview of the options available to the city to comply with the ruling and order, including the recommended option of adopting interim controls. Ms. Spears will be reviewing the draft interim codes at the next council meeting on January 14th. Notably, if adopted, the draft interim codes would create a new chapter, which would be Chapter 18A .95, and that would be for all wireless telecommunications and eventually replacing the existing chapter of 18A 85. Additionally, the city is in the process of revising its current franchise agreements and also drafting a master license agreement for use of city-owned poles for small cell facility siting. This concludes my presentation, but if the council has any questions, I would love to answer them.
Questions for Ms. Kelly-Fong. Mr. Whelan.
Thank you very much for the update. So my Reader's Digest version is, at a minimum, we have to revise the fee structure that we put in place last year, which I think, as I recall, was like an $11,000 application fee and an annual processing fee, and that's reduced down to either 500 or 250, right?
That would be the...
Safe Harbor.
The franchise fee. We are considering reducing that. This would be actually for the siting application, for a permit to put it...
A particular pole or series of poles?
Right. The franchise would be to use the right-of-way.
Okay, so that's still supportable under the FCC's decision in September?
Correct.
Okay, so it would just be the pole siting fees per, is it per pole, basically?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
The application fee, is it per 5G network on any number of poles or per pole, or remind me how that's going to be applied?
So it's per small cell facility, and there is a definition of what a small cell facility entails. And per the FCC declaratory ruling, you would have batching, so you could have five small cell come in on one application for $500.
I got it. And that covers a spectrum of space, I think.
The small cell facility itself, yes. They do cover around, I believe, 300 or so feeds.
Okay.
Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mayor. So let's go back to when the industry folks were here, and I appreciate Councilmember Whelan refreshing our memory on a couple of those things. I'm trying to think, how many of these do we think they're gonna cite? Because there's at least three major companies, and then they're gonna wanna cite. And I think they were here downplaying how many they thought they would put in, but in reality, what are we, what are we talking about?
So currently, we've heard interest from several developers for around three to nine. But like you mentioned, with the advancement of technology such as autonomous cars, we assume that there could be more coming in the future.
Okay, so, and, right, so nobody really knows, is really, okay. So then I'm looking at the priority of locations, and I'm assuming a lot of these are already where there's existing cell towers, because you say water, water towers, and I think Lakewood Water has been pretty aggressive in renting their space out on their water towers, industrial areas and various things like that. But I think all along, our concern was, in residential areas, we'd have these big kinda suitcase signs and different things, and their representatives kind of poo-pooed that. So is our hope that they'll, I think our hope is that they'll go into a lot of these existing things, but realistically, when you say that they're gonna do these, come in and do batches of five, they're gonna be five in an area, so they'll be on a water tower, and then they'll be 300 yards away from that water tower in a residential area, and then, is that what we're looking at? I'm trying to get my arms around.
So a lot of the interest that we've received are currently on utility poles and light poles. Typically, they want to put them between 30 to 50 feet. That's where they... That's where they work best for their radius. So, I don't see a lot of macro cells being where they want to locate their small cell facilities. It'll be more on our street lights and street poles. Most of the interest is along commercial corridors, such as Pacific Highway.
Oh, okay. And then, you said, you said our fee structure would be okay as it now sits? Or that that would come under some challenge? I guess I didn't quite understand what you said.
So, we're currently looking at revisiting our existing franchise fee. Now, the franchise fee is a deposit, so whatever is not used goes back to the applicant. But what we are looking at is getting a small cell permit. So, this would be for review of the eighteen A codes, similar to another sort of citing permit, if you would. In addition to that, looking at right-of-way attachment fees and use fees for city infrastructure.
Okay, right. And we discussed that before in that meeting prior, because we're assuming that the utilities are going to make, are charging. Do we know how much they're charging?
We currently don't know how much the utilities are charging. We do have some information on some public utilities. However, with the FCC ruling, we're recommending to go with the FCC safe harbor fees and waiting to see what happens.
So, the, these are interim regulations. And then, between now and the six-month timeframe or some, somewhere thereabouts, are we expecting that we'll just kind of hammer things out on our own? Or we'll get some kind of guidance on a kind of a model? I think when we talked about, I think when you talked about these before, there was, there were model ordinances out there. And AT&T had one, and then there was some other version that some other, the other carriers used. Is that what we're hoping for, that between municipal governments, I guess at the national level now, and these big carriers will somehow, they'll somehow hash out some model ordinance that we can use, and we'll just kind of bring in pretty much lock, stock, and barrel? Are we going to, are you thinking that we're going to have to put in a lot of staff time trying to research it and trying to make it work on our own?
Well, I'll start with the interim codes. The interim codes were based off of a model ordinance, as well as review of the City of Olympia and the City of Puyallup's existing ordinances. And so, I think part of that is, yes, we'll continue to look at what other jurisdictions are doing, but also just to see what's happening in the environment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the research and the memo, but I would like you to help me understand a couple of elements. One is that there is a requirement that fees, however we establish them, have to approximate our costs. What are the elements of cost to the city that are anticipated? And how would we go about determining? And what's our, what's going to be our process to sort of determine what our costs are?
So, it is a, it's going to be a new process for us all, so we will be tracking our time and how we go through the process of the franchise, the master license agreement, as well as any permits that come out of this. And the idea currently is that we'll use those FCC safe harbor amounts as baseline fees and adjust them if necessary in the future.
So, that sounds like there's a segment of the costs that are administrative processing costs. Are there any ongoing maintenance or other sorts of costs to the right-of-way that we would envision being an element of our, determining what our actual costs are to have these? Or is that sort of, once they're there, they're there, and we're not responsible, don't have any city costs of maintaining them? Other than if a city pole should be destroyed by a windstorm, there would be some costs for something like that. But are we primarily talking about the administrative cost of having the program?
Yes, administrative costs. However, just like other utility franchises, there would be provisions for maintaining and repairing the right-of-way.
In your memo, on, what's page ninety-four of my packet, but looks like page two of yours, there the recurring fee, it says annual right-of-way access fee, two hundred and seventy dollars. And is that per small cell facility? Or is that a annual fee to a contractor for as many facilities as they have?
Currently, my understanding that that would be per small cell facility.
Per small cell facility. And then, on the next page, the very first sentence says, regarding the fourth criteria, which is having some aesthetic parameters. Aesthetic requirements consistent must be established and published prior to April fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. That in your recommended actions, I wasn't quite clear whether I saw that the recommendation was that we were going to do something in terms of establishing some aesthetic criteria by that date. And it's also not clear to me what the impact of not doing so by that date. Does that mean you can never do any? It's a kind of, the way that that is worded, it's like either do it or never.
That's one of the things that we're waiting to see what happens after January fourteenth and April fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. What I will say is that the interim codes are intended to include a minimum aesthetic and design requirements for small cell facilities.
What sort of aesthetic guidelines are we considering? And how would we gather the input to decide what aesthetic guidelines we want to adopt?
So, I know project manager Tiffany Spear will be going over the interim codes next week at the study session in detail. But what I will say is, going back to the comment that council member Bokey brought up, is that the interim ordinance and interim controls were designed off of model ordinances, as well as what other jurisdictions are looking for. There will be a public hearing that's held the following week if the interim codes are adopted.
Okay, I guess I am concerned that even if it's titled an interim regulation, if it's the only thing we do prior to April fifteenth, then it almost by default becomes permanent. As I read the, as I read it, that there's a deadline to have, to adopt them. So, I guess we could get some clarification about, if you adopt some, in what sort of timeframes can you change them? That's all that I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the report. I'm just, I don't remember, maybe you'd covered it, but I don't recall. Is there a limitation on the number of sales they can put per phone, per pole?
There isn't a limitation on the number of small cell facilities. There is now a limitation in the volume of space that can be used by any infrastructure on a pole, and that is at twenty-eight cubic feet.
Thank you.
And I believe a planning manager Tiffany Spears would like to address something in the last comment.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Couple of things very quickly, to go back to Mr. Bransitter's comment about aesthetics. Yes, the way the hearing, or the, excuse me, declaratory ruling came out is by April fourteenth or April fifteenth, because it falls on a weekend, you need to have aesthetic requirements in place that comply with that ruling. And they cannot be something above and beyond what you're asking of other utilities. They have to be reasonable. They can't limit their ability to install in a timely way. So, between now and the fourteenth of January, one of the things that we'll be looking at is whether, what Lakewood Municipal Code already requires for other types of poles, other types of utility installations, covers aesthetics, whether that's coloring, a shroud, setback from something that's really visible, whatever those requirements are, and see if they would apply equally to this and/or if there's other jurisdictions, model ordinances or something that we could pick up regarding aesthetics. Yeah, you need to have something in place by January fourteenth, and then you need to make sure by April fifteenth that it's not going to affect the ability for these utilities to install whatever they're going to install. One other thing I just wanted to point out, and I think there was some questions earlier when I first walked in, my apologies, that the way this is laid out for you in draft language is all underlined. And that is because this is renumbering what's currently in your code for the most part. So, this is not a page after page after page of new text. There's maybe three or four sections within this chapter that are new, specific to small cell. The rest of it is simply being renumbered, but it's what your current code reads.
Ms. Kelly Fong, if I can summarize the recommendation, it would be to roll over and accept the inevitable, which is the FCC has a lot more authority than the city council. Let the National League of Cities or others fight on behalf of municipalities, arguing that the FCC has exceeded its authority, but it would be fruitless for us to do that. Set, initially set the fees at the maximum safe harbor level. So, get everything we can under the safe harbor. Then evaluate the actual cost to see if we can justify a later increase when and if appropriate. I would add to that, adopt reasonable aesthetic requirements that we think will pass muster under the ruling as it now stands. And also, I guess the Anderson corollary, which would be explore, not at our leisure, but not urgent, explore charging our current franchisees who operate, who own poles, structures in the right-of-way for using them for a purpose that isn't intended by the franchise agreement when they rent their facility to the small cell operators so that we might share in the bounty. Is there anything inconsistent with my summary that would be part of staff recommendation?
I think that was a very good summary.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Back to you, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up is our economic development manager Becky Newton to give the council a briefing on a piece of property in the Telacom neighborhood that we are recommending we acquire.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, deputy mayor, members of council. As city manager mentioned, we are looking to purchase some property in the Telacom neighborhood at one four seven oh two Union Avenue. This is between Maple and Lake Street. It's one point two acres or fifty-three thousand, three hundred square feet. We're proposing to offer three hundred and thirty-five thousand or six dollars and twenty-nine cents a square foot. It's currently listed at four hundred and ninety-five thousand through Mr. Lynn Larson. The property is currently vacant. When we first looked at it, about a year and a half or so, the property did have two mobile homes on it and two other structures, which the owner has cleared. So, the property is vacant. And the property was appraised and value certified at two hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred in December of two thousand and seventeen. After speaking with owner and the broker about the appraised value, they had counter-offered at three hundred and thirty-five thousand, which included three twenty-five, one thirty for land and ten thousand for two mobile homes. So, we did a little bit of research on what it would cost for us to remove the mobile homes. It would be approximately, would have been approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. And so, we looked at, at values over time, and we've been working with the property owner and the broker for about a year now. And so, with an eight percent value increase, which is kind of, kind of about what we've seen in land values, we would be at about two eighty-seven, eight twenty, just to kind of give you an idea on that. We have not done an update on the appraisal. We have been, as I mentioned, working with the broker. The purpose for the property would likely be for a branch library in the Telacom area, but it could also be used for any priority civic use. So, tonight, we're seeking, we will be seeking approval for the city manager to sign a purchase and sale agreement for the property. If the council approves, we will have up to a ninety-day due diligence period in which to perform the phase-one environmental review, boundary-reliance survey, look at proximity and location of utilities and so forth. Once it is purchased, we plan to fence it to secure the property. And I believe that covers my comments for this evening.
So, I mentioned this to the city manager, but I think we also need to check the location of the drain field for the adjoining mobile home park. Like most areas of Telacom, if you look at the adjoining property, it doesn't appear to have enough non-pervious surface, or pervious surface, excuse me, to adequately have a drain field. And it is not hooked to the sewer system because the state legislature, in its infinite wisdom, has said that you can't force a mobile home park to hook up to a sewer system absent failure. So, if you look at that and you look at the history of some of these other properties that are crammed together, it's, there is some possibility that the drain field was at one time in common or encroaching on this property, which could be a complication in due diligence that we need to resolve. So, hopefully, we can check for that at the same time. Any other questions or comments? Generally okay with this? I think this, I looked it up, the tax assessment, which is generally slightly low-ball, is like two ninety-eight or something in that range. So, it's in the range. And it's, the valuation of the improvements is a hundred dollars, because they're actually negative. So, consensus here? Okay, we'll move forward on that? Thank you. And now, the additional item, Mr. Buer, regarding complications with the comp plan amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. A little bit of history, last month, on December the third, the city council adopted a resolution twenty eighteen twenty, which established twenty nineteen comprehensive plan docket. I believe there were about fifteen applications, and the majority of those are pretty straightforward in what I would call your bread and butter, bread and butter type of amendments. But two of them, particularly increasing the density in the R-two zone and changing the types of uses in a portion of Springbrook from residential and mixed use to industrial, required a lot more work. And so, over the holidays, Christmas holidays, a lot of time was spent looking at these two amendments and their relative impact. These two amendments I would regard as major amendments. We did some work on this. It was concluded that we would end up having to do an environmental impact statement. That impact statement would be for all of the twenty nineteen amendments, just not these two. The estimated cost for this is approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. When you do an EIS, there's also an issue of timing. It's going to take between seven to eight months to prepare. It's going to take between seven to eight months to prepare, and collectively, the planning commission and city council will spend four months upon review. When we took a look at the, increasing the zoning in the R2 zone, this area is primarily along Chambers Creek, Clover Creek, the Tacoma Country and Country Club adjacent to American Lake on estate properties located in the south side of Lake Stilicon. Most of these areas are already built out. There are 701 parcels. I believe we have about 586 single-family residences. The R2 zone is built under capacity by about 37%. However, as a potential increase for new development along the two creeks, Chambers and Clovers, is probably going to be severely limited. And so the same is the case for the Country Club Road, which imposes certain impediments to future development. The private road is only 20 feet wide, and certain sections of it are only paved to 17 feet. If you are going to allow for an increase in density in the R2 zone along that section, future development would be required to provide for a road of 60 feet in width. When you get into the issues of the increase in density, you're also looking at major investments in infrastructure. That's referred to as concurrence under the Growth Management Act. So when you take a look at this, increase in density, you're also looking at sewer lines, water lines, power facilities, roads, and so forth. The next piece was just the overall organizational structure of the amendment on page two of the memo you have at table. And on the right side is the current density and minimum lot size for the various R districts. And then thirteen and fourteen, excuse me, thirteen, you see the difference, and you'll notice that the spread between R2 and R3 is pretty close. And the question that this raises, are we pushing the R2 zone closer to the R3? And would that be a better zone than leaving it R2? And it raises the question whether or not it's necessary to modify the R3 zone based upon the proposal to change the R2 zone. I do not know the answer to that question. Separate sidebar issue came up about overall density being four units per acre in residential zones. I did go back and take a look at growth hearing board decisions on this. This is a topic that's discussed extensively amongst all the decisions. I believe that there are 16. You are allowed to have a lower density, lower than four units per acre when you have issues of critical areas or shoreline issues, which we do have along sections of our R2 zone. Changing this a little bit, I did spend some time also on the Springbrook industrial proposal. There is a potential loss of housing with this project of about 1,500, approximately 1,500 units, but this can be made up with the increase in density associated with the downtown plan, where we are proposing to place our higher residential density in future years. We also do not have any shoreline industrial policies or regulations. So in speaking with my colleagues, they indicated the process that you would have to do would be to amend the land use and zoning classifications, and then come back afterwards to the Department of Ecology and amend the shoreline regulations in 2020. What we would be doing if we went to this proposal is we would be basically copying other shoreline regulations from other communities, but before you can do that, you have to have the land use in place. The issue of the floodplain overlay kind of comes into this, and proposing industrial development, you may not see the kind of warehouse development that you've seen in other parts of Pierce County, given the fact that most of the area is within a floodplain. Now, there are special ways to reduce this by what was referred to in the report as dry floodproofing, elevating mechanical and electrical equipment and so forth. There's a new type of zoning being discussed in these kinds of situations called resiliency zoning. That might be something that we could apply to this proposal. But the more I thought about this, these improvements are relatively expensive, and are we changing the price point for industrial development if we go in that direction? At the bottom of page three, there's a series of alternatives provided for the commission, or excuse me, the council. And on page four is a recommendation. That recommendation is that accepting for the downtown plan, we really have not changed density, residential density in the city of Lakewood in over 20 years, and that yes, is probably timely to revisit that subject. Point I would bring to the council's attention, we are starting the buildable lands report process as we speak for all of the, all of Pierce County, and that includes the city of Lakewood. We will be looking at the overall efficiencies of residential densities in all zoning districts. It would prove pertinent to move forward with that and then bring back to the city council recommendations on overall densities in all of the, all of the zones. This will also give the council tight, an opportunity to take a look at the efficiencies of commercial industrial development as well. The proposal would be to have the planning commission study this, bring forward with some recommendations for the city council, and then as necessary, make amendments in 2020.
Question for Mr. Bure. Mr. Razzetter.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Historically, as we have gone through the comprehensive plan and zoning change processes, there has always been the option for the council to put items on the table. Historically, that has not been things we have done very often, in part because the council's not looking to do little bits and pieces of things, but is looking to try to do things that make significant impact in the comprehensive plan and zoning. These two amendments actually mark the first time in quite a while that the council has had the public, had the staff recommendations, had an opportunity for the planning commission to make recommendations, and then chose to make its own. So I am a little concerned that one of the reasons why maybe we shouldn't do this is that we didn't budget to do it, that, and that it seems that there would be an option if we chose, although it isn't in any of the recommendations, to recognize that there is a need for some environmental studies on these two items, but that it would push the final adoption of any 2019 package further out while, while we were trying to move it further in, in the year. That being said, I do think that it is a, maybe a better strategy to evaluate the densities of all four of the R1, 2, 3, and 4 zoning things so that we don't make a change that then doesn't have the dispersion amongst them that we would like. But in your recommendation, is that then something that would allow for a package to be up for consideration in the 2020 comprehensive plan, text amendment, zoning map change window? Is that what I'm reading, that the recommendation would allow? Whether we would choose to do it or not, but would we be able to put it into 2020, given the statement that there's nothing in the 1920 biennial budget to, to do the work?
Well, first of all, if, if the city council wishes to move forward with these two amendments in 2019, we will do so. But I wanted to make sure you had more, sufficient information to make what I would consider a more informed decision. The second part of your question, I would indicate that the buildable lands analysis will take a look not at just R1 through R4, but all of your residential zoning districts, including multifamily. So it's, it's a much more holistic look. My feeling is, is by the time we finish up with what's on our plate so far, in the fall, we will have recommendations to give to the city council on densities for all of your residential zones, and that based upon that information, the city council can make a determination if it wishes to move forward with amendments in 2020.
Okay. Then with respect to the proposed amendment in Springbrook regarding identifying and moving some lands from multifamily to industrial uses, that, and I understand that we've then got to fill a gap in our shoreline management regulations because we didn't have anything that dealt with industrial, because there didn't any industrial exist at the, at the current time. This is the one that I would think that we would want to continue to move forward with in this year. And my thought process on that is, yeah, for the other things as to what sort of development would really happen, it isn't, we're not really sure, but there is an element of this of that there is a type of a development that we want to preclude, and, and that we don't want to build new and have new projects being proposed and grandfathered in into the floodplain in Springbrook for multifamily development. So, you know, I, and, and you can move forward with the zoning changes, and then in the following year cycle, do the shoreline, shoreline work to be able to go and do that, and there's no one coming and saying, I want to build something industrial there that we're trying to appease or accommodate. So, you know, I would be in favor of an option that makes this a study year for densities across the city for residential densities, but that moves forward with changing the multifamily designations in that floodplain in Springbrook to something else, and then, and then doing whatever logically follows from that. And I'm, I'm not saying to do that in terms of predicting that we would actually approve those, but I'm saying that we should move the process forward, gather the information both through the planning commission and our us to decide whether we should. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
On page one of your memo, you indicate that the two amendments will trigger the preparation of a draft EIS and a final EIS, and I suspect, although I don't know if it's stated with explicitly in here, that that would substantially delay, irrespective of the cost, would substantially delay the process. Is that correct?
I, I said that in the terms that, that we were anticipating taking these forward to the city council in the June-July timeframe. By doing the EIS, that's not going to happen. That's going to extend this, where the city council would be reviewing it later in 2019, but it would be done this year.
So if, would one of these amendments by itself trigger the requirement for an EIS? We pursue one option and nothing's?
The requirement for an EIS is oftentimes a matter of art and not necessarily one of all, of all the issues. I can tell you that, based upon what I've seen so far, if you take the total holistic applications of floodplain, housing impacts, housing issues, impact on critical areas and concurrency issues taken as a whole, that would require an EIS.
And that, would the city's recent experience with Lakeview Pit and ecology's heightened interest in the existence or nonexistence of wetlands in there be a parallel, a parallel experience?
Just so the council is aware, now Department of Ecology is requiring toxic hazardous waste soils analysis on all development in that part of the city of Lakewood. There has been some concern that that could affect the construction of 123rd Avenue. So in conversations with the Public Works Department, we are currently performing toxic waste testing on 123rd in anticipation that Department of Ecology is going to say something. So far, the tests have come back all negative. So there is this heightened area of review. If you are asking me tonight, based upon my knowledge of, of these issues, my feeling is, is you could move forward with a DNS with the Springbrook proposal, but if you're going to move forward with the proposal for the density taken as a, collectively, that's what triggers, in my opinion, the EIS.
We can parallel track this with the two items going to the planning commission.
Yes.
And is your opinion that that would not trigger the EIS?
My, my opinion, as I speak this evening, based upon my knowledge of the current situation, is we can move forward with all of these amendments minus the increase in the zoning in the R2 by doing a threshold determination of no significant impact and adopting a DNS. Now, that's certainly going to be subject to some public debate as we get into this
Mr. Whelan.
Well, I would favor punting at a minimum on the proposal on the R2 increased density issue for a couple of reasons. You know, I'm not a big fan of density for density's sake unless it makes sense. I prefer to wait for the buildable lands report to come out. I think having a holistic review on all the land in Lakewood makes imminent sense. It also gives an opportunity for the subarea plan that we passed to take some effect. We already have some townhome developments coming in to the town center that will create some density, and I'd like to see over the next 18 months what further opportunities for development we may see without increasing density in the residential zones. So I would punt on that one. As to the Springbrook one, you know, I would be fine going forward to that if we don't have to necessarily spend $130,000 on the EIS for it. If we can get away with it, track it through the planning commission, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I'm fine with the, in fact, I'm all in favor of a comprehensive review of our, of our zoning for residential areas so that we can have this penultimate discussion as to whether or not we want to be Apartment Bill USA still and, and shove people in apartments, even though we've never had a constituent, I've never had a constituent say that we want more apartments. But it's been the city's policy to lightly zone areas so that we can have lots of apartments. So I, I look forward to that discussion going forward, so I would, I would put that aside and wait for the buildable lands report. I'm still confused over, over the Springbrook area. It's in a flood zone. We put it in a flood zone. We put it in a flood zone because the state of Washington, the federal government, wanted us to put it in a flood zone. They wrote a new flood map and said, you better pass it or else. So it, it would seem to me that we should do everything possible to make sure that there's nobody living in a flood zone where they get pushed away, and we already have people living there. So we should do everything possible to make sure that density is as light as possible within flood zones. so that when floods occur, we don't have people saying, why did the city allow them to build there? They're not going to blame the federal government, they're not going to blame the state government, they're going to blame us. And it, it would be our fault now in this case. So I guess I'm confused as to, should we just slap a moratorium on to any new building at all? I mean, we've got one that's already being built, the Kidney Dialysis Center. Just slap a moratorium on this thing until we can get these regulations in place so that people won't continue to build in a flood zone?
Is that a question?
That's a question.
You have to also have another project, the Cloverbrook Apartments, which is 264 units. They are vested, they can move forward. Whether they do or not is unknown at this time. I will also tell the council that the city has flip flopped on zoning on this section for many, many years. It goes back from one to the other. Part of the problem, that's not only the flood zone, but the lack of infrastructure. The roads are not in good shape, there are no roads. The underlying sewer and water is probably missing. You have wetlands, you have large amounts of now Oregon white oaks that are being subject to preservation based upon what we know with the Cloverbrook project. It just seems to add up. So if we're going to propose industrial, I'm not answering your question yet. But if you're going to propose industrial, you may end up with a certain type of industrial use that's slightly different than your standard industrial use. So I think that's a good direction. A moratorium, I'm not seeing the amount of development. It is very, very difficult to do any type of residential development in that area. And the level of development, if you take a look at current densities, is quite low based upon the underlying zoning, which is quite high. And that was done to meet the intent of the Growth Management Act. Those units all flood. Many of those units are going to be subject to rental housing. I believe we've run into problems already with flooding and decks and things of that nature. So we know we have issues. But, you know, going back to your original question, I'm not in favor of doing a moratorium because I just don't see the development being proposed, given all of the underlying problems with the site.
You, you mentioned the shorelines, but we do have a shorelines. We passed a shorelines amendment. So you're saying that there, right now, there currently is no industrial shorelines regulation? You kind of give the, giving everybody the impression that if I wanted to build a warehouse, I could build it to the edge of the creek. But in fact, that's not true, correct?
That's not true.
There is a regulation.
There are, we have shoreline regulations for commercial and residential development. We do not have regulations for industrial development.
And how, how many feet would that be right now?
I, if it's, if it's residential, it's 65 feet. If it's industrial, I do not know. And it may very well, we come back with a different type of zoning where we establish an open space adjacent to the creek, which is not a bad idea. Or making sure that we identify it very clearly with critical areas. And then have a setback with industrial uses designated as such beyond that setback. But those are things that we need to work out with Department of Ecology. I don't have experience dealing with shoreline industrial issues. And they're not going to talk to us about this until we first have industrial regulations in place.
How, how much is the setback for commercial?
I can't recall off the top of my head.
Okay. 65 is all it is for residential?
65 for residential. And that one, we got a special exemption through Department of Ecology, given the fact that we have so much existing development already in place. Residential development in place.
Okay, okay. That's why they approved it. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from Mr. Bier? You what, looking for guidance?
So I know exactly what I need to do. We're going to defer on 13, which is increasing the R2 density, but we're going to move forward with the Springbrook industrial.
And we're not spending money on EIS?
No, we're not spending money on EIS. All right? If, if something comes up, I'll let you know, but I'm not anticipating.
Okay, thank you. Back to you, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I appreciate your indulgence as we brought this item forward to you again. It was something that we found out after the fact and we wanted to get in front of you soon rather than later before we get too far down the road. Just a few items. First is, is our Lakewood Connections magazine went in the mail last week. We've been receiving a lot of positive comments on that. Just like to recognize and thank our communications manager, Bryn Grimley, for again, doing a wonderful job and working with the departments and pulling that together. The magazine itself kicks off with a little bit of an introduction from Bryn herself, just talking about how people can stay engaged with the city on a number of fronts. And then also the Council Corner is an article on adult family homes, businesses and what the city is doing. And hopefully working with our state delegation to try and facilitate some change there. Likewise, we've been getting a lot of positive feedback on, on that as well. But again, just wanted to recognize and thank Ms. Bryn Grimley for her work there. Also, we could go Saturday. Our police department had a cocoa with a, with a cop for little kiddies in our, in our community here. And it was, I understand about 200 folks showed up to learn about how our police department operates and get an opportunity to hang out with some of our, some of our patrol officers. And so I understand the event was not just very well attended, but kids had a, had a, had a great time. And just want to thank our police chief, Mike Zaro, for, for coming up with that idea and, and moving that forward. This past weekend, we had a little bit of a, I understand, a little bit of a windstorm. Apparently I slept through it, though when I woke up on Sunday morning, didn't have any power. So at least I know my internal clock works. But wanted to really point out our Graves shift because they were out there. So, you know, I think it was, I think it was Sergeant Suber, so he was the city manager. And they did a fantastic job in keeping the roads clear as limbs were coming down and also preparing for the next morning when daylight came up so that our crews could get out there and do some work. Likewise, our day patrol, when they came on board, they immediately began doing a windshield survey of the community and reporting that out. And then our public works crew led by Tom Cummings, him and several of, of our employees came in and, you know, with some chainsaws and stuff, started removing trees to clear, clear some of our roads, particularly down on, on Interlock. And the good news too was that while we did have some power outages, we were not as negatively impacted as many communities. Our, you know, we're served by three electrical utilities. Lakeview Light Power didn't have too much lost power. And the power that they did have, they got it up relatively quickly. Likewise, TPU Tacoma Public Utilities, they had a couple of isolated areas, but again, not too much of an impact. And then Puget Sound Energy, I think they had them the, the most where there was about 800 customers right in the middle of the city between Interlock and then over by Lake Louise Drive that, that was without power. But again, they were able to get in there and get power restored by about one or two o'clock on, on Sunday afternoon. And I do understand that there are still folks within their service area that don't have power. So overall, it was a good response and good partnership with all of our utilities to just keep people in the know. Also, again, Bryn Grimley, our communications manager, put some information out on, you know, in terms of what was going on and what people could do to report issues and things, things along those lines. One of our legislative priorities is to try and get some funding to do, you know, a station assessment study, to have Amtrak stop and pick up folks here in our community as well as JBLM and, you know, folks from Parkland, Spanaway and, and, and the like. And we've actually gotten a lot of support from that. We've received letters of support for our ask from Sound Transit Lakewood Water and District, Lakewood Water District, JBLM West Pierce Fire and Rescue, and our own county council member, Pierce County Chair Doug Richardson. We've also received, received a commitment, a support letter from our county executive, Bruce Stanmeyer, as well as Linda Smith from the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce. So I understand those letters are, are coming forward. It's also likely that we'll receive a support letter from the Clover Park School District and members of our federal delegation. And we've also asked for letters from Amtrak and Washdawt Rail, and they're actually considering it. That's actually is a follow-up from a meeting that we had with them late last year. So the good news is that we're garnering some support for that. And so once we have all of those compiled, we'll, we'll deliver that to our state delegation so that hopefully they can get that included in the transportation budget as they work through their issues here. I think the council's aware that our public works department has been working with folks, folks who live adjacent to American Lake. And our public works director, Paul Bucic, and our engineering services manager, Greg Vigran, just late last week went out and met with some of the leaders out there. And long story short, they're, they helped them put together a petition to form a Lakewood Management District that would come back to this body and you would form that. We're also working with both JBLM and Camp Murray, given that they actually own a significant portion of the property on American Lake. And we haven't gotten a firm commitment in terms of what they can do yet, but they do recognize that they play a role here and they need to do something. So we're hoping we'll be able to bring forward the formation of that management district, maybe in, in mid-February or so. And that kind of runs on the parallel track when we expect to be able to receive some funding from the state to be able to do some mill foil treatment later this spring and, and summer. So at the end of the day though, it is going to be a matter of the residents who live around the lake, whether or not they want to form the Lakewood manage, I'm sorry, the Lake Management District because they're going to have to, you know, pay a fee for that. I think as I had also previously reported, the folks over in Carp Lake, which is a privately owned lake, have done the same thing. And actually, Mr. Vigran and our assistant city attorney, Ali McCain, played a, are playing a key role in, in helping them along as well. For Silicon Park, Angle Lane Project, where we're now, where we're going to do some road improvements, but also put in water and sewer. We expect to bid that project out later this spring and construct it in the summer. We have a commitment from the Lakewood Water District to contribute $250,000 to increase the size of the water main coming down there to a, to a 12 inch as opposed to an eight inch, which is what our needs are for our facility. So some good news there and want to thank the Lakewood Water District for their contribution and participation there. We learned last week, council may be aware of this, that the Clover Park School District is going to be recruiting for a new superintendent. And they have hired an executive search firm. And so apparently they're reaching out to some community leaders about meeting with them and learning what kind of qualities they would like to see in a new superintendent. And I know I've been approached to do that. Also, I understand beginning on mid-January or so, they plan on putting out some kind of a survey online to seek that type of input from the, from, from the community in general as, as, as well. As you look at your calendar, tomorrow morning, coffee with the mayor. His Martinez will be there talking about our special events. She was at your last council meeting in, in December. Then tomorrow evening and afternoon is actually two sessions. You have all received an invitation and he recognizes it's on short notice. But Major General Retired Jimmy Collins, who serves as the CASA for here in the Pacific Northwest, is working with a group of folks to raise money for the National Museum of the U.S. Army back in Fort Belvior, Belvior in, in Virginia. And I think they've raised, well, they're, they're, they've raised the majority of the money, but they're still looking for 30 million. And so they're just kind of making the rounds. But again, they are hosting, hosting a bit of an, an event at the, at the, at the Lewis Museum tomorrow. There's one at 4:00 PM and another at, at 7:00 PM. If you're interested in attending, let, let me know, we can get you on the list so you can get a briefing on what they're trying to do there. I know the deputy mayor sent out some information on the passing of Ms. Robinson, Deanna Robinson, over at the One Word Castle. And they are having a private memorial service for her a week from, no, I'm sorry, this Saturday. And I know this body has been invited. And if you do wish to attend or can't attend, please RSVP directly to the deputy mayor on that. Next week on January 16th, the Well Found Behavioral Health Hospital is happening. They're opening reception, so that's the joint endeavor between CHI, CHI Franciscan and MultiCare to build that multi-bed facility over as part of the Allen Moore campus. So they're going to have a, an opening, it's from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. 5:30 is actually they're going to have some, you know, the actual ribbon cutting and things along those lines. And then they'll, they'll, they'll have a, have a, have a, have a tour of the facility. If you haven't received an invitation, I know, let us know if you'd like to attend and we can RSVP on your behalf or simply, you know, just to show up. But it's from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, again, with the festivities at 5:30. And it's located 3402 South 19th. It's a new building right on the corner there. And then of course, lastly, a week from Saturday is the 15th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. And again, at Harrison Prep. And it's, it kicks off at 10:00 AM, but we would request that you be there no, no, no later than 9:45 because we would like to, I, I know the committee would like to have you all walk in and, and, and be introduced as you're, as you're seated. So I think that with that, that's my report.
Questions for the city manager? Now we'll go to council comments, Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say Happy New Year to all of you that I haven't seen. And I wanted to also echo something that the city manager had said on the magazine. I've got a lot of comment, positive comments on the magazine. And the cocoa with the cops, they thought that was the cutest thing that ever was. So a lot of good comments coming that way. And then one night, I attended the reception for civic leaders at the Harbor Nero on JBLM. I forgot what night it was. It was the nights running together after a while. So good thing to be back at work, I just wanted to say, good to be back.
I see our, our gendarme tonight, Officer Austin Lee out there, who, who informed me that he was prominently displayed in the cocoa for cops media because he was the best looking policeman available. Mr., Mr. Bulkey? Mr. Rastetter?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I did have a chance to go by with a cocoa with a cop. And I, and I want to say that it was a very successful event, not just for the young people that came, but also for the adults that came and, and did as much conversing with police officers and, and of interest as, as, as others. But also for the officers themselves. I think that they had a, I think that they found it as a good way to, to interact and got, got some perspectives to be able to go and do that. I did attend the Telecom Neighborhood Association meeting last week. It was, there was, there was not a lot of significant things there, but they, they are concerned about the property that the city is considering acquiring, that now that it is had all the structures and things down, that they're worried about temporary residents there being able to go and do that and that, to be able to go and do that. I, I went to Tacoma to the groundbreaking for the Arlington Road project of the Tacoma Housing Authority and the, and the Y of Seattle where they're building a facility specifically to serve homeless youth. You know, where they, they've gotten multimillion dollars from multiple sources, including the state and, and, and the county and others. And so it, it's, it's a step towards dealing with homelessness issue and a targeting a segment that hasn't had a, a dedicated facility to go through and, and do that. I do plan to attend one of the listening sessions that the school district is going to have to help provide any input about the qualities and experience of a, of a, of a new superintendent for, for, for the district to be able to go, go through and do that. And Ms. Moss mentioned the 62nd Air Wing's community leaders reception. And I think that one of the significant things that the commander of the wing spoke to about, he talked about the fact that the on-base community partnership here was superior to any that he had experienced anywhere previously in his career. And that most specifically, he said that the value of that is particularly And that most specifically, he said that the value of that is particularly from the fact that it provides better care for airmen and the families of airmen than are-- have been found anyplace else that he's been. And he truly views that as one goal of the partnership of the installation communities, Lakewood in particular, and the airmen that are there. And I thought that that resonated very well with this last statement in our community vision of where we saw a vision of being supportive of military personnel and their families being able to go into that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Barth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say that I hope you all had a wonderful Christmas and Happy New Year to all of us. I too attended the Coco with the Cop and it was a fun, fun event. Got there early and stayed quite a while and got the tour of the police station for the second time, but I did not get put in lockup, just for the record.
Holding cell.
Holding cell, that's correct. That's correct. Got to watch the youngsters run up and down the gun range, which was-- everybody just was-- they were very relaxed, had a great time. The officers interacted with everybody and it was just a great, great event. I think the one person that stole the show, aside from Mr. Austin Lee out there, was K9 Kira. That dog was busy hugging people from 10:00 until 2:00. She just wraps her little paws around the kids and they were rolling on the floor with her. And it was just really a very heartwarming event. So, kudos to Joanna Nichols and Bryn and everybody that had their hands in putting that thing together because it really was a great success. And I hope that they don't just stop at one. I hope they do it again and again and again. So, anyway, Happy New Year to all.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to begin by saying I'm glad to see all of you and to wish each and every one of you a very good and prosperous New Year. I'm a little disappointed that the Bears lost yesterday the way they lost. For those of us from the Midwest, we are in black. We're wearing black today because the Bears managed to kick one away. But more importantly, I want to come back to something that I introduced as an idea for us to consider during our last meeting of 2018. And I'll begin with an apology, not for anything I said, but yeah, that's it, Jason, damn. But for what I didn't say. And it wasn't so much what I didn't say, it's what I didn't do. If you will recall, I suggested that we take a look at disposable plastic bags in the city of Lakewood. And I did not speak well to that topic. And so, when I left here in December, I went home and I did my homework. And so, tonight, what I would like to do for a few minutes is talk to you with evidence, with charm, with everything that makes Mary like me so much, about why I would like us, yes, John, I improved in 2019, you believe that, to consider looking at this issue. And my thinking is deductive. A while ago, I read about a whale that washed up on the Washington Coast. Biologists performed an autopsy and 33 pounds of plastic were taken out of the whale's gut. I spend a fair amount of time working out in Fort Silicon Park. Sometimes I do some photography down around Lake Wahop. It's over 75 yards of fishing line, nylon fishing line, that I've pulled out from the rocks and the-- along the shoreline. And I've had several people talk to me about the issue of plastic bags. And so, I sat down and I was looking at what other municipalities around here have done. And one that came to mind was Gig Harbor, which on December 10th of last year, did pass an ordinance about the distribution of carry-out bags. And as I read over their ordinance, which I have here in front of me, they grounded it in the RCWs, 70.95.10, paragraph four, six, and I believe one other. And they go from that premise to what plastic is and what it does. And for example, it's a petrochemical. So, if I take this out, this is made of oil. If we leave it in our lake, let's take Silicon, for example, it will take 10 years to biodegrade because that's how long it will take the sun's ultraviolet rays to break down the petrochemical composition of this material. Now, when this material degrades, it doesn't just go away. Aquatic life will ingest it where it will stay there, which goes to a study here about-- where is it? Main pollutant oceans bays in other U.S. waters linked to occurrence of leukemia and lymphoma cancer because people are ingesting fish. If we bury this, it'll take 125 years to go away. One of these takes 450 years to biodegrade. And so, as I started to go through the research, and then I looked at how Gig Harbor framed the issue, they made a very simple point. They have a Home Depot in Albertson's, a Safeway and a Fred Mark, which order between the four of them, 9.9 million plastic bags per year. We have a Lowe's, we have an Albertson's, we have a Safeway, and we have Walmart. Gig Harbor has a population of 7,200. We have a population of 59,000. Logic would dictate that we have more plastic bags in Lakewood than they do in Gig Harbor. And yet, they passed this not as a punitive measure against these stores, but as a way to start to nudge this idea of taking care of the environment a little further along. And so, what I'm suggesting tonight is that we think about that as well. And I'll conclude with this. My father once told me that no matter where I go in life, I should work to leave that place in better shape than I found it. This does nothing to leave Lakewood in better shape. Thank you.
Mr. Whaling.
I can only top that perhaps if we put the fireworks subject on the same agenda. And that way, they can avoid taking them out from the reservation in the plastic bags to fire off in Lakewood.
There you go.
Which they do, actually. I mean, that is another topic for conversation. I do appreciate the--
Thank you, Jason. I also appreciate the mayor's comments, I think.
Coco with the Cops and a chance to go there as well. I missed out on the Coco because it was, you know, you guys apparently had taken all of it by the time I got there. And the dog was actually trying to take my arm off as opposed to give me a hug. So, I don't know if it was the clothing that she had smelled from her previous engagement. I just don't know what it was, but--
Yeah, we just knew.
It was actually--
Could smell trouble.
Yeah, could smell trouble. It was a great event in all seriousness, and I think the Police Department did a fantastic job. And it really went to the essential nature of what the chief is trying to do, which is to create a community sense of policing, which is engaging the public with them as well as the Police Department with the public. So, kudos to all of them, including the dog. Arts Commission had their meeting tonight and on their agenda is the preparation of a public request for proposal for public art for the Gateway in the Colonial Center Project that, as you know, we passed last month to move the ball forward. So, they asked me to ask you if you have any particular thoughts or themes that would help them direct and create the RFP for the call for artists. That would be much appreciated. So, historical thoughts, themes, you know, welcoming, those kinds of things. Let me know and I'll pass it on to them. They're very excited about it. Looking forward to seeing those of you who can make it to Thornwood for Ms. Deanna Robinson's memorial celebration this Saturday. As you know, she was a big fan of Lakewood and of our military, community connector, and did many, many great things for all of us and for the community. And look forward to celebrating her life. Want to put a plug in for your calendar for March 7 coming up. The Econ and Development Board has their big annual meeting. City of Lakewood is an investor for the EDB. I happen to chair the EDB this year and will emcee the event. We're doing something unique and different this time. We have brought in a national speaker who is a futurist and economist, and she's going to not only present something that's unique and tailored to the community, but there will also be an event the day prior where she'll meet with certain members of the community to form some background and consensus building as to where the future of the Tacoma Pierce County region may be directed and headed. And that will frame some of her comments or remarks at the event on March 7. So, I know we usually get a table. I would encourage us to do so. It is noon, so about 11:30 start, yeah, typically, March 7. So, it should be a good event. Finally, CELT, Community Engagement Leadership Team with the Clover Park School District, is having their first meeting in 2019 tomorrow night. There have been subcommittee meetings over the last six months that will generate a sense of direction tomorrow as to what the CELT team believes that it can propose as something that will be of help to families and students in the Clover Park School District. For example, Leadership Academy may be one of the proposals that comes out of that particular meeting, which would be framed with community input to assist parents with students in particular targeted schools. We're going to take a small bite of the apple and see how the pilot program can go. But more to follow on that and I'll follow up with you next month. That's it. Thank you.
Well, I think it's worth looking at in the future. I'd like to comment on Mr. Simpson's effort with respect to our plastic bags. And I'm not unsympathetic, but I tell you for a couple of reasons. One, I'm fortunate enough to spend routine time in Maui and where your economy is dependent upon tourism and beauty and you have many beaches and the local culture does not have a history of recycling. It was very obvious when plastic bags were banned that the beaches improved. Cost-benefit analysis, directly involved or direct impact on the economy seemed to work. Also, a diver, I've seen sea turtle in Ghost Net. I mean, it's-- the sad fact is, the U.S. isn't even in the top 20 countries in the world putting plastic into the ocean and it's a blip on the screen. And if we're going to make a political statement, might think about doing something innovative. I don't know that the cost-- I don't know. It's-- I'm not saying it's not true, but I just don't know whether the cost benefit of to the environment is worth banning plastic bags, given the extra costs that's going to be involved, health concerns about reusable bags, blah, blah. However, however, a political statement that I haven't seen any government make would be to charge for bags and take that money and send it somewhere in the world where it can actually have a positive impact on a better scale to keep plastic out of the ocean, like Malaysia or China or India, where some rudimentary efforts at keeping plastic out of the flow into the oceans would actually make a lot more difference than anything we could possibly do in the United States. And there it would be a political statement.
Your comments are dead on. I could have-- I should have pointed out that what I mentioned tonight is something that's catching on across the country. So, in a sense, there is a-- when you start to compare countries, the United States realizes that it does have an issue with plastic and is starting to move in that direction. And I also see your point about, and I'm not particularly interested in a political statement, other than to say, while I understand there are other countries that dump plastic into the ocean, and I've seen some of the work done by a French scientist who's trying to develop this net to pull this stuff out of the oceans--
Probably going to sink.
It-- well, as a matter of fact, it did. The point that I am making is--
Island size of Texas.
Yeah, pretty much. And I don't mean this the way it sounds. Right now, I don't care about the rest of the world. I'm elected to represent Lakewood and we have said that we are going to have a sustainable, clean, healthy environment. And so, while I agree with you, I'm maybe splitting hairs with you on it's basically living up to our mission or our vision. I hear you. Thank you.
As usual, we want the same things.
We do. You and I just come out of--
We might come in different directions. So, last week, Ms. Moss, it was Thursday night that we went to the 62nd Air Wing event, which was a good event, as previously noted. On Saturday, city manager and I, along with our spouses, attended a holiday event at General Valeski's quarters, one of five shifts, I understood later. We were the last shift. It was surprising the energy they had left. But also, on Friday, I had a meeting with the folks from the medical unit at the Washington State Air National Guard. And this is-- I'd like to get a consensus from council to chart a no-cost path that I think is a win-win-win. This came about when state senator Hans Zeiger from Puyallup area, who in his weekend life is a captain in the Air National Guard, called me with his National Guard hat on and said, would I be the person either from the city, the county, or both, to talk to about something called innovative readiness training? And overly simplified, this is a civic mission by the National Guard, in this case medically-oriented, medical and dental-oriented, to provide services in the community on a basis that doesn't compete with private enterprise, where they activate National Guard troops under Title 10 as on a temporary federal activation for liability purposes and do such things as sports physicals for schools, basic extractions and fillings, prescriptions for glasses. They do it on a basis like they were mobilizing, sometimes living in field conditions. There's no cost to the community they need to be invited in. My suggestion was that they look at, and I subsequently, I talked with them on the phone and subsequently met with them the end of last week, to bracket the base. City of Lakewood has Telecom, Springbrook, Woodbrook areas that have low-income populations that have demonstrated need, underserved communities. Parkland Spanaway and undercorporated Pierce County, the other side of the base. Counties on board for pursuing this. I'd like to-- and it requires an invitation from the community. So, that's why they're coming. We have to invite them and then we coordinate with them to look for sites and assets and community partners. But there's no economic outlay on the part of the city. We have to do the invite and-- We have to do the invite and handoffs and help them find, for example, if they don't have access to the mobile dental clinic or they can't get one off JBLM, they may need to cite, they, they can get some equipment, but they'd need to cite someplace that has, uh, site or sites that have, uh, autoclave and, and biohazard disposal so they can sterilize and get rid of the bad stuff. And that's, here we have Pierce College Fort Stillcom with its dental identity program, they do some clinic work there. We have the nursing programs at, see Clover Park Tech and, and PLU. So they're assets to explore in the area, so it's, and it's a real feel-good thing. They told me that the, uh, the folks in the Guard are anxious to activate and do this. They did one, six locations in Hawaii last summer. It wasn't just location, they feel good about serving in their own community. It's kind of the National Guard mantra, serve at home, activate. And, uh, so they have a lot of providers that line up to participate, so. Um, hard to find the downside. So if, if there's no objection, I'd like to sign off on a, on an application to invite them to Lakewood, uh, and see, see what goes. So state-only funding is, this would be probably late summer 2020. You go through a different federal cycle, they bring people in from other states, it would take another year because of the bureaucratic rev tape involved in the applications. We can also potentially parallel track that, so we're, we're looking at a federal fund, federally funded activation, uh, a year later. Doesn't, having one doesn't preclude the other. So, anyway, great opportunity, I think, so. Anything further? Pardon? Yeah, we have a brief executive session. How long? 10-minute executive session? So. So we're going to adjourn into executive session for, uh, 10 minutes to discuss potential litigation against the, uh, or by or against the city with, uh, the city attorney. Uh, we will take no action in executive session, of course, and when we return, the only action we'll take is to adjourn. So we're recessing to executive session now.
I used to do to my husband at the breakfast table in front of kids. This one works.
So. Where's my tin? There's my tin. Oops.
So here it was on alphabetical. So it was giving you alphabetizing them. So then I went here and did modified date, done, and it should put the most recent one up top.
Okay.